Dear Heavenly Father, we come to you this evening grateful for what has been a very smooth transition into the new school year, as well as the grand opening of our newest school, Arlene Mero Elementary. We are grateful for the dedication of our employees who readied schools, buses, cafeterias, and classrooms for their students' arrival. And we ask your blessing upon each of them as we move forward into the school year. Grant each of us the willingness and compassion necessary to care for each student, and help our students and parents do their part in making this a great year for learning. These things we ask in your name.
Amen.
Ms. Egan, please, in a flash, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We'll call Ms. Polcetti.
Mrs. Acevedo, here. Mr. Campbell.
Here.
Dr. Kraft is not with us. Mr. Egan.
Here.
Mr. Gaines.
Here.
Mr. England.
Mrs. Dysart is not with us.
Mrs. Lemoine.
Here.
Dr. Lewis is not here.
Mr. Long.
Here.
And Mr. Warner.
Here.
Thank you, Ms. Polcetti. Item number four, we've got SuperNews, Ms. Snyder, welcome.
Well, good evening. We had a very exciting summer and a beautiful kickoff last week, followed by a great first day of school. I'm not going to go into too much detail, I'm going to let SuperNews do most of the talking. The one thing I did want to point out is our Day of Reflection Breakfast is scheduled for August 29th at 8:30 a.m. at the Shalmit High School Cultural, or I'm sorry, the Shalmit High School Ninth Grade Academy Gym, and you have information about that in your packets. So without further ado, I'm going to let SuperNews do the rest of the talking.
And now, from the desk of the superintendent's office, it's time for SuperNews.
Hi, I'm Alex Schneider.
And I'm Barry Lemoine, and welcome to this edition of SuperNews. We'll start things off with a look back at the hit that was The Little Mermaid. The performing arts academy production of this Disney classic was truly wonderful. The quality of the show was top-notch, but so was the magic and collaboration that took part behind the scenes. Over 120 students participated in this year's performance, and all of the teachers, staff, and volunteers deserve much credit for making this show one to remember.
(Singing) Under the sea, nobody beat us, riots and eaters, it free cause he, we want the land folks love to cook, under the sea we off the hook, we got no troubles, life is the bubbles, under the sea.
Speaking of celebrating accomplishments, the St. Bernard Parish Public School System welcomes our new school to its family. Here, we see the ribbon cutting right before Arlene Mero Elementary opened its doors this week to nearly 550 students. The home of the Bees, its school colors are green, gold, and white, and its slogan, "At Arlene Mero Elementary, we dare to dream it and we work to achieve it." The new state-of-the-art school on Paris Road sits on 14.6 acre plot of land donated by the Arlene and Joseph Mero Charitable Foundation, and is a great new asset for our district. Go Bees!
But also, a tremendous partner, and as Ms. Dysart mentioned, who has donated the lane that this building sits on to make this possible for us to do the construction, is representing the Mero Foundation, and all of her board members with her, but this really you, and we all her.
And speaking of Bees, this year's school theme is "Go Beyond What Is Expected," and that was certainly the case at the recent back-to-school rally, as music, dances, video skits, and inspirational commentary helped set the tone for the new school year.
But we will also have conversations to continue to develop school cultures that are sensitive to our employees' as well as our students' needs. I urge you to develop self-care practices that help us take care of ourselves, so that we can take care of our children.
Longtime CHS principal Wayne Warner also defied expectations when he met his faculty this year, entering as the literal captain of the ship. Wayne's leadership was also celebrated in Philadelphia recently, when he was recognized by the National Association of Secondary School Principals for his 44 years of continuous membership in the association. The principal since 1973, Wayne has been instrumental in the school's and the district's success. The world has changed dramatically during his time as principal, but one thing has never changed: Warner's unwavering and unbelievable strength and commitment to the children of our community. It is because of his love and commitment to CHS that the school has continued to thrive. Thanks, Wayne.
Would also like to congratulate the members of the Smith Elementary Junior Beta Club on their recent trip to Disney World to compete in the Beta Clubs National Convention. These superstars from Smith represented their school and our community with great pride, both onstage and throughout the Magic Kingdom that week. Congratulations to the club and to their sponsors.
And now, it's time for our teacher feature segment, as presented by the members of our school board.
Today, we'd like to honor music teacher Judy Rockwell, now in her 10th year teaching music at J.F. Gojia Elementary. Ms. Rockwell has worked tirelessly with our music classes, as well as the drama program, to ensure that they receive the very best in music education.
Rebecca Nolto teaches sixth and seventh grades Social Studies in St. Bernard Middle. She's a member of the PBIS team and the sponsor and coach of the St. Bernard Middle Cheerleaders. In the classroom, Ms. Nolto strives to keep her lessons rigorous and engaging. Her dedication and commitment is truly a blessing to the district.
We are honored to spotlight Melissa Noonan, who always pursues new and creative ways to bring the best out of our kids, by emphasizing listening, shared responsibility, and collective problem-solving. She is incredible at building relationships with our students.
We thank all of you for your commitment and for always going beyond what is expected.
Speaking of commitment, we'd also like to thank and bid farewell to a quiet hero in our community, Albert Carey. The project manager for all of our recovery efforts, Albert has been a key piece to our district's success post-Katrina. In addition to sharing his talent and vision with us, Albert has also been an incredible benefactor and a patron of the arts. We will miss him dearly, but wishing him well on this next phase of his life.
A cultural arts center with a theater was impossible. A swimming pool, an Olympic-style swimming pool, and a planetarium, all that just seemed impossible. But with Boyd's vision, Doris's leadership and determination, and the hard work of everybody in this room, we got it done. Right?
Thanks, Albert, for your love and commitment to the children of our community. Your legacy will live on through the buildings you created and the lives you've touched.
As another school year takes shape, it's hard to believe it's been almost 12 years since Hurricane Katrina came calling, but that date is also a reminder of how far we've come as a community since then, with 12 brand-new state-of-the-art schools. To celebrate our thriving school district and those that make that possible, we will host our annual Day of Reflection Breakfast on the morning of August 29th at Shalmit High School. Come join us for food, fellowship, and a chance to hear about all of the good things happening in St. Bernard. Tickets can be purchased by calling central office at 301-2000.
Well, that would just about do it for this edition of SuperNews, but before we go, let's take a quick look at the first day back at school, as students, staff, faculty, and families all geared up for another great school year. Thanks for tuning in, and we'll see you next time on SuperNews.
Where we always let...
The SuperNews Roll.
Thank you very much.
Any questions for Ms. Snyder? Again, thank you, and you did a wonderful job.
Thank you, Mr. England.
Okay, we'll move on to item number five, construction update from Mr. Albert Carey. And before we start, Mr. Carey, I just want to wish you a happy birthday.
Thank you. Well, they started pile driving at trust, so as you know, it was delayed because of the high water in the river, and the Corps of Engineers wouldn't give us a permit, but all that's in hand now. And they've driven forty-some piles already, and they expect to be finished by the beginning of the week. So it didn't take much time to drive the piles, and so there won't be that much noise now for the students. But everything is really, all the colors have already been pretty much decided. We're going with everything that the original school had, so we're not really changing anything. So even though I won't be here to see it, Jason's been fully briefed, Jason Dewey's been fully briefed on everything, and he'll be able to carry on as I was doing. He's a very capable young man. I'm very fond and very pleased that he's working in that position now. Of course, the first day at school at Arlene Mero was really fabulous, I thought. It was so much fun to see all the little kiddies going in, and we didn't really have the traffic problem that I thought we might have with the buses and all. It all worked out pretty well, thanks to advanced planning, and then the sheriff's office was out there helping to direct traffic. So it came out really nice, as everyone has seen, and I'm very proud of the way that school turned out. So that's the new construction news that I have. Any questions about anything?
Any questions from board members? Well, Mr. Carey, you've been an asset to our school system for many years, and right now, we've got a little talking of our appreciation from the board, because you have been a benefactor to our cultural arts, you know, and as far as all the schools, that, you know, like I said before, a complete asset to the system, and a little bit hard to do it ever without you. But right now, we've got a little plaque here, please, that presents to Mr. Albert Carey, and a tribute to his dedicated service to the children and the community of St. Bernard Parish, by the members of the St. Bernard Parish School Board, August 8th, 2017. You'll be dearly missed, sir. You're welcome here anytime, you know.
Let me say, it was an honor and a privilege to work with all of you all on this Herculean task of rebuilding the parish schools like we did. And, I mean, I couldn't have been prouder, and it was fun working with all of you all, and of course, with Doris. I mean, she was, she was our leader through this whole thing.
But, you know, the amazing thing is, you know, you could look at all these public entities that, you know, around the state, the whole state, or even outside the state, but we are debt-free, because it's people like you who make it possible for this whole parish and for our school system. And words can't express what we owe you, sir. That's what I can say.
Well, like I said, it was an honor to be a part of all of this.
Thank you. And also, we have a little gift...
Oh, wonderful.
For you and for Patty, your sister.
Okay, thank you.
Right here, and if you come around, but I think Ms. Polcetti would like to say a few words. Sir, if the board members would like to say something.
I know I'm going to be repetitive. We've said this on so many different occasions, but 12 years ago, when the unbelievable happened to us and to this community, and we didn't know where we were headed and how we were going to put everything back together, you know, as I like to say, the vultures descended upon the school system. So everyone who came in and thought that they would make lots of money, because there was going to be a lot of federal funding coming in, and they came and they wanted to do so many different things, and of course, everything at a tremendous price. And I think that October, right, Albert?
Mm-hmm.
I mean, Albert and his former partner, Mr. Heck, had worked on our schools prior to the storm, as many of you know. And when that happened, and we were in our darkest hour, and I called him and I said, "Albert, please come, I need you." We all need you, because I need somebody who I can trust, and someone who always has the best interest of the children and the community at heart. And he came, and at first, we, you know, couldn't pay him a dime. He didn't even realize that you could actually get some money for doing some of what he was able to provide for us through the federal funding. But he came and he went through the parish with the FEMA officials, showing them all of our schools, verifying what we had prior to the storm, answering all the technical questions, as the FEMA people came in in all their little gear.
Protective gear.
All their protective gear. We had already walked through the muck and the mud and the buildings ourselves with absolutely nothing on, so we thought that was a little bit humorous at first, I guess. But the seriousness of it, as Alex mentioned in the SuperNews, in these 12 years, we've built 12 tremendous facilities, and this man has helped us in an unbelievable way, not only with helping architects with the design and the project management and making sure things were on time, but not only, not only that, what he, what he has given to the children in this community is just immeasurable.
I remember, I thought I was just staying through the opening of the Unified School. So we got it open, and I said, "Doris, I guess I'll go back in retirement." She says, "Oh, no, you've got to stay to the last one." So I stayed, really, to the last one.
He made, he made that promise to me. And along the way, what he did in touching the lives of the kids, as that cultural arts center was made, and that's one of Albert's loves, and always has been his entire life. I know he made many trips to New York to see the plays he was in at the cultural arts, did tours in the Quarter, and he helped our children tremendously in the building of that facility and in the continuance of the program, and he has endowed that program with the Cultural Arts Foundation. So those programs will continue to live on through Mr. Carey's generosity in endowing that foundation with his own money, and more importantly, with his time with the kids. He takes them, there are things that no one will ever know about, the lives that he's touched, helping young men through college.
Look at the fun I had, too, Dewey.
Well, you may have had fun. There were a lot of people who would not have done what you did. And he continually takes our kids to field trips in the Quarter, he takes them to plays, to drama productions downtown, and I just don't know what we're going to do without him. I can't believe he's going to be a Yankee up north. But he promised me he's only a phone call away, and when we need him, he'll come running. I mean, I know he will. He'll be there for us, just as he has been these past 12 years. So I want to thank him from the bottom of my heart.
Thanks again. Thank you.
Mr. Long?
Yes, Mr. Carey, we definitely will miss you. You know, I'm one of those that were, that was around here when it was Heck and Carey. And when Mr., when Mr. Heck retired, we all were wondering, wow, it's not going to be the same without Heck and Carey. I mean, it's like Dean Martin and Jerry Lewis. You can't split them up, but, but you did, you did a fantastic job for us over the years, and we really appreciate it. And no one, you, you're, you're going to be a very hard person to replace, and thank you from, for me personally, I appreciate all your help. Thank you.
I also want to mention, you met my sister. She was a big help to me, to keep me moving and going, you know? So...
Especially the last few projects with the punch list items, there was nobody who was more tenacious in making sure that all of them were completed on those projects than Patty was. So tremendous help, Patty.
Thank you, Patty. Dr. Kraft?
Thank you, Ms. England. Mr. Carey, you, you have been invaluable to us, and we recognized this as a board early on, and of course, I'm glad that you teamed up with the superintendent to make so many things happen for the best of our students in St. Bernard. You're a true professional, and of course, we certainly appreciate your sister Patty by your side, helping, helping you along and helping the St. Bernard Parish School System. The students are benefiting from it, the parents, and it's an all-encompassing achievement of what has been done in St. Bernard Parish, and we thank you from the bottom of our hearts, and wish you well as you retire again. And it was good that you came out of retirement to help us down here in the St. Bernard Parish School.
Let's hope I don't have to come out a third time.
Now, if things grow, and we get a big influx of student population there, we might have to build another school, and we'd be happy if you'd come and help us out.
Just aside for a new high school, too.
Yeah. And thank you so much, and God bless you as you go forward. Thank you.
Mr. Carey, if you'd come around, we'd appreciate it. It's an honor to me, and that's a gift for you and Patty.
Welcome back.
Okay, come back for that. Oh.
Thank you. Thank you. That's right. Please, people back. Come. Thank you. Don't eat too much plant jobs. As I can hear you saying, "I'll come back."
Want to take a photo?
Just remember, we have golf here.
That's for you and Patty. Thank you, Patty.
Thank you, guys.
And Mr. Carey drives off tomorrow, guys.
Yes.
On his birthday.
Have a safe trip.
Treasure.
Okay, we'll move on to item number six. Mr. Gaines, take over, please.
Item number six is, item number six is the technology in the classroom. We have Mary Lemanna.
Hi, good evening, and I just want to talk to you a little bit tonight about some of the exciting things we've added this school year in the area of technology for the students and the teachers. It'll benefit both, actually. So as you can see from your handout, we're going to put in fourth and fifth grade classes, and in sixth through eighth grade, English, math, science, social studies, and in the ninth grade academy across all four content areas, and then the high school and of course, areas as you'll see listed here, we're going to put class sets of Chromebooks. And I put a small image on the right-hand side for you. Chromebooks are basically just like this, small laptop-sized devices. They operate basically from the internet. They don't have a hard drive operating system on the computer, and they start up immediately, very quickly. The batteries last all day, they're nice and light, and we've had great success in small numbers we put in the schools last year. The students were excited to use them, their engagement level was high, and we have some pieces we're putting in this year to even increase that. So we really believe with this increased access, it's going to help not only prepare the students for, you know, to be college career-ready, ready for the workforce, and really engage in some 21st century technology, but it'll definitely increase their comfort level on the standardized assessments, since those are going to be on computer. So we have several ways they're going to use it in the classroom. They'll use it for instruction, they'll use it for some intervention, some remediation, and then also for enrichment. Because when the teacher's no longer limited to what he or she can type up or print out or put on a piece of paper and handout, really, the opportunities are limitless to dig deep and figure out what a student's need is, and remediate that, and then also help extend and enrich. And when students can go on the internet and find articles and research things and find images and really engage and interact with the activities, we have found their, you know, their achievement increases because their engagement drastically increases. I had a parent just tell me today that her son is in elementary school, and she said, "You didn't eat much of your lunch today." And he said, "We were on the computers all day, I didn't have time. I didn't have time, we were on computers all day today." So he was so excited about working on the computer, he didn't want to eat lunch. So it's just really neat to see how excited the students get with it. You know, the, in addition to our own software programs, we have some Google products we're going to use this year. We're going to train the teachers and students on Google Docs, which basically is like Microsoft Word, where they can type documents and share documents. And the nice part about Google is the Google Drive is something that comes with it, which is like a shared drive or shared space, that the teachers and students can share documents, students can peer edit, so more than one person at a time can be editing the same document. So it'll really increase the collaboration on the students' end and on the teachers' end. So teachers can plan and team and create documents together and share these on the Google Drives. And finally, as far as Google goes, we have Google Classroom, which is a phenomenal tool, where teachers can actually assign work to the students in the classroom and not have to print out papers and hand them out. They can create documents on Google Classroom, they can assign them to the whole class, students can do their work on the document, save it back to the folder without printing, no copying, and the teachers can even grade it within the Google Classroom. In addition, some of the software we use currently on the internet, the teachers can assign lessons right within the Google Classroom. So students can just open it up, click on the links, and go right to it. So it really increases the productivity in the classroom for the teachers. So, sorry. So we're really excited about that. We feel the kids are going to get engaged, and it's really going to increase what the teachers can do in the time they have the students in the classroom. Now, the teachers, in addition, can assess on the computer. So for the students, the state has come out with something called LEAP 360, which is a computer-based assessment system, where students can take diagnostic tests and then interim tests, two to three per out the school year, so the teachers can get an idea if the students have mastered the state standards, they can get reports on the standards, and the students can increase their comfort level taking assessments on a computer. It's very different from taking an assessment on paper and pencil, math in particular, when you're trying to solve a math problem that's on the screen. So it takes some training on how to get the information off the screen and really get into the work. So in addition, our district has created some computer-based assessments that teachers can use, and teachers can make their own formative assessments on the computer and on the web, so the students can really have some good practice. Now, in addition to the assessments, we have some really nice support laid out for the teachers this year. We have trained about 25 district-level people, from instructional coaches, we have some teacher leaders, we have some central office administrative staff, central office support staff, and few certified administrators, who were trained to be Google-certified trainers. So we did a Level 1 training with them in the summer, we have two more days to train with them in the winter, and then we'll follow up two more days in the spring, and they will finish being a Google-certified trainer, and we have at least one at each school. So each school level will have a school-level person where they can work with their teachers, train the teachers, and the district days. We did some training in August, they'll get some training in November, and then again in January, and then at their grade-level meetings, we'll support them as well. So the teachers were very excited in August, when they came back and learned of Google Classroom, the Google Docs, the Google Drive, and having the Chromebooks in their room. And the students who've used them already, you know, have been really excited. So we just, we're excited about what it's going to do for their productivity, and then eventually their, you know, their assessments on the computer. In addition, we do have some iPads at the elementary school and the lower grades, and we have iPads where we have five to six classroom sets, and teachers use them in centers for the lower grades. And this school, you would put an iPad at each central office, one iPad with Google Translate. So when someone comes to the front desk, they can, they can do speaking translation, and they can hold it over documents in multiple languages, and it can immediately translate the document for the central, you know, front office staff. So we're real excited about that.
Is there any questions from Ms. Lemanna? Well, I, you know, I'm really pleased to see this effort, who maybe who does with the classroom, it is a phenomenal piece of software, and, and Google Docs, it takes me back to my classroom days, I was using Google Docs as well, and yeah, it does work. It's peer editing's there, it's easy to see, and they see it in real time, so it's very effective. And so, and, and just happy. Thank you, Ms. Lemanna. Anybody else?
Quick question. The Chromebooks using the internet, is it, is it the same as a laptop? I mean, you could do anything on, with the Chromebook?
Yes, it's exactly the same as a laptop. Anything on the internet you can do, you can do on the internet. You can't store software or programs on it like you would on a computer, but much of our software is web-based anyway, so the students can access it through the internet. We don't have much that's not web-based anymore.
And how does the Chromebooks differ from the iPads? The iPads are for the younger children, easier to use?
Right, the iPads are the touchscreen, they have more apps and things you would do for younger... Well, each teacher is assigned a laptop, and the teachers can be on the Internet on any of the web-based applications that the students would be viewing from the laptop. And the teachers can pull up Google.
But will it show?
Exactly, on the screen, yes. Because they'll basically be on the same website. So, the students will access the website from the Chromebook on their screen, and the teacher will have their, his or her laptop projecting on the screen. So, even teachers with a regular laptop and a Chromebook, you, you can see the same thing.
Right. And that will help in the introduction of topics, et cetera, when you're starting something new, and then they can further explore that down the line. But that's exciting.
And we find the editing when students write, they're much more likely to go back and edit and rewrite if it's on a computer, and they can delete and retype. If they have to rewrite, they're less likely, less motivated to rewrite.
I remember the days when you had to do this in the typewriter, and you made a mistake all the way to the bottom with footnotes. You crumpled it up, throw it on the floor, and start over. Yeah, that's progress, people.
So, your first draft's always your final draft, right?
That's progress. Thank you so very much, Ms. Lametta.
Mr. Warner?
Thank you, Mr. Gaines. Assistant Superintendent Lametta, will the students have remote access to some of these lessons also, or is it just strictly from inside the class and with Chromebooks?
The students will have access to the lessons at home.
Oh, great.
They, well, on our student zone, they can log into our website and access them there. In addition to Google, can be accessed any way you have Chrome Internet.
Fabulous.
Chrome Internet browser, I should say.
Thank you. Otherwise known as Data Girl.
Well, I kept thinking, and I'm gonna go back way back into my ancient history, that the copying room, and you know, last minute, running into a morning to run off a handout for my students, you don't have to do that anymore with Google Docs. You just have it ready, and you can make changes just a minute before the classroom starts.
And the nice thing is you differentiate within the classroom. So, if you have a handout set up and you realize certain students need it a different way, right there, you can quickly edit and make it either more challenging, more enriching, or put in a few more scaffolds for students who need it. So, I really feel like it's gonna open up doors in every way for teachers and students, yes.
Exactly. So, it, so I think I, publicly say, Ms. Fayo would not be fussy any for the extra copies I'm making in the copying room. I remember that. I used to count every copy. So, anyway, well, thank you, Ms. Lametta.
Sure, thank you. My pleasure. Thank you.
Is it Mr. Gaines?
That's it.
Okay, fine. Move on to item number seven, personnel changes. Ms. Foche?
Okay, in your packet, Mr. Granberry has been very, very busy the last couple of weeks, and you can see really the final appointments that are being made prior to the beginning of the school year. And we're happy to say that we're fully staffed from the teaching perspective at this point.
Ms. Foche, I noticed here that we've got some retirees.
Yes, we did.
Yeah, we'd like to wish them a happy retirement. Janice Beckner, Clara Estebado, and Michelle Morales. I hope, wish them well. Mr. Campbell?
Yes, Claire and Michelle. Former students.
That, too. Michelle was one of my campaign workers.
Oh, okay.
From the island. I spent a few days ago, a trip down to the island. And it's so sad. All of you need to take a trip down and see, it's just desolate now. But these girls were from down that way, and Michelle was from the island, worked at Raleigh for quite a while.
Yes, she did. They both did. They both did.
Yeah, they both did. And I wish them the best in their future. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Campbell. Mr. Gaines?
Just, you know, Mr. Campbell, I come from that same background. I taught Michelle at St. Bernard High, and so I wish them both well in their retirement.
Anyone else? That's it, Ms. Foche?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you. And again, have a happy retirement. Okay, move on to item number eight, Louisiana Compliance Questionnaire. Mr. Fernandez?
In your package, you have the Louisiana Compliance Questionnaire. We present this annually. It's something the board has to adopt before the beginning of our annual audit, which will take place in the month of September. Basically, it's just answer some questions about the school district as well as access to a test to a number of statements which assure that we have followed all Louisiana laws and laws applicable to school system operations. Things such as the state law, Budget, the Budget Act, and the ethics laws of the state of Louisiana. So, we're gonna ask you to adopt this so we can give it to our auditors when they arrive to begin our audit.
Okay, any questions? Mr. Warner?
I don't have any questions. I'll make a motion that we adopt the Compliance Questionnaire.
Second?
Okay, the motion by Mr. Warner, second by Mr. Long. I just want to mention one thing. On the last page, if everybody will take a look at that last page, make sure your address, your telephone number, everything's correct. If there's any type of correction, please get back with Mr. Fernandez, please.
Yes, sir.
Any other questions from anybody? This is a yearly thing, right?
Yes, sir.
If there's no other questions, please cast your vote.
Motion passes nine, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Fernandez.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll move on to item number nine, superintendent's recommendation. Foche?
Just to remind everyone that at the regular meeting in two weeks, the board will consider a motion to call an election in November to renew all of our operational melages. And then also, as Ms. Snyder mentioned in the super news, the, our Day of Reflection Breakfast is August 29th. So, anyone interested, the tickets are now going on sale. They're $10 a seat. And you can call the main office, 301-2000, and ask for Shelby, and we'll be happy to reserve tables for you at that time.
Mr. Long?
Ms. Foche, considering, talking about the renewal, when will a public hearing be held for that?
The public hearing, are we gonna have the public hearing?
On?
Mr. Fernandez?
Is that required?
That should be at the time that we are doing the actual consideration of it, which will be in that two-week period at the end at that moment.
Following the board calling the election at the next meeting, it will be advertised for four weeks in the same in our voice.
Anything else from any of, Mr. Campbell?
Okay. Motion, second by Mr. Gaines. All in favor? Displease to join. Thank you, folks.